Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the September 2, 2021 Smyrna Municipal Planning Commission meeting. And I will call this meeting to order and we will begin with a prayer from Mike Allen and the pledge from Tim Slate. Could stand please?
Let's pray. Dear Father Lord, we just thank you for this day you've given us. Father God, we just thank you for the opportunity you've given us to serve our town and our community. Father God, just be with us as a commission to make the right decisions for the town moving forward and the future plans of the town. Father God, just continue to lead God and direct us in all we do. Father, just be with our first responders and all the people that are still battling with COVID. Father, we just lift them up to you. Father God, just continue to lead God and direct us in all we do in Christ's name. Amen.
Please follow me in pledge.
Pledge. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mike. Continue. Citizens comments?
We've done it this time.
Our next item is approval of the minutes of the August 5, 2021 meeting. Counselor, are the minutes in order?
In order at this point.
Any discussion from the council? Any changes? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
May for approval.
I have a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Of a motion and a second to approve? Further discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. On to new business. The first item is annexation and plan of service request. J.M. Burns, Aspen Grove, 4852 Rocky Fork Road and 4973 Lee Road. Annexation and PRD zoning, rezoning from RM to PRD.
Yes, this is a request for annexation. This is, it's all of one parcel and part of another parcel totaling about 31 and 1/2 acres. The surrounding zoning is RM in Rutherford County. This area is not contiguous to our current town limits. We have, as a part of the request, if you just choose to recommend annexation, we would recommend that you annex a portion of the existing roadway of Lee Road, basically from the current area there near Woodmont to about 4,100 feet over to this property. That way it would be contiguous to our town limits. Land use plan would actually support a mix of office, retail, multifamily and medium density in this area. And that was because of inconsistent with our thoroughfare plan, which has a roadway coming through this area that would be an improvement or relocation of Rocky Fork Road. And so it would eventually extend all the way to I-65. So I'll come back to that in just a second. The proposed PRD is for 69 single-family lots. There are, from a plan of services standpoint, this area is served by Consolidated Utility District for water. And they, at this time, do not have adequate fire flow. And so it is anticipated it would be three to four years before they would have that, before any building permits could be issued here. From a sewer standpoint, this area would be served by the Olive Branch Sewer Main that is under construction currently. It is not there yet. Expected availability according to our utilities department is probably as good as till nine to 12 months away for sewer. A portion of this site is affected by the 100-year floodplain. And so a letter of map provision process would be required through FEMA for development as it is proposed. Some of that area shown would be in the floodplain currently, so they would have to go through a revision to the flood map to do it as they're proposing it. And we did have also, we did include some maps in our present, in the PowerPoint that I'll get to in a second. Again, we are, our current thoroughfare plan has a roadway that would be a relocation of Rocky Fork Road through this property that would actually eventually connect to Amwell Road and I-40. Staff has been working with surrounding jurisdictions, meaning Rutherford County, Williamson County, Knowlesville, Brentwood and Franklin, on a plan to establish a route to connect I-24 and Rocky Fork Road with I-65 at McEwen Drive. That has not been established at this time. We have done some preliminary work internally where we have looked at topography and different things and come up with some options. But the plan now is, and we have actual financial commitments from all the jurisdictions I mentioned, that we're all working on this together, to do a more formal corridor study that looks at all the various factors that could affect a placement of a roadway and establish that route, working with all those jurisdictions, all that, that entire length of the roadway, looking at environmental factors and those type of things, as well as cost and the most feasible route to take. We are, have now progressed to the point that we are ready to, or will be ready at the October council meeting to recommend a consultant to do that study. So we're, and that'll take six months or so after that before we would have that study completed. So I have had these conversations with the developers well aware of all this, and we have had these conversations about potentially delaying this until, delaying his request to us until that is completed. So, but they didn't want to move forward, and so they have submitted to us for consideration. So that's where we're at. We'll kind of, the area on this map shows it a little bit better. That area shown kind of in the kind of gray area, that is the route that we have, in a very preliminary manner, kind of looked at, and they are accommodating for that. That may be exactly where it ends up, but at this time, we don't know 100% for sure if it would be or not. Actually, that's not even a part of the, that part of the parcel is not even being requested for annexation at this time. This kind of shows a little bit, it's a little hard to see. I don't know if my mouse will show up. Yeah, there it is. Here's I-24, Rocky Fork. This, the, and then there's various options for different ways they could cross. This is the yellow line here is the primary route that we're considering, at least. This gets you into Knowlesville almost, doesn't get you all the way to 65 on this map that we've got in front of you. But the area, the parcel that we're talking about is right here, this area, which is, again, again, this route is a very preliminary look at it, so we don't know for sure where it's going to go. But anyway, so that's, that was, I guess that's pretty much all I had. Our main concern really is the timing. It's not necessarily the development plan or should we annex this area or not, it's just, you know, I have a concern about establishing something when we don't know exactly where we may need right of way in the future. So.
Okay. Questions for Kevin?
I have a couple. Kevin, I agree with you completely. The timing is a concern. So I want to restate kind of what I'm understanding right is October to get a contract for the consultant to do the study for the road, six months for a plan, but it's three to four years for Consolidated to have the fire flow needed to issue a building permit, and nine to 12 months for us to get sewer out there. My concern is if we approve this, we would start sewer, and so we're investing money to get sewer out there to the development around the time we're getting the consultant information back about what the route is going to be, but still a year and a half, two years before he could even get building permits because of the water. So I just want to make sure I had the timing right about all of that, because of what was in here. Secondly, do we have a special assessment district out here for sewer?
Mike's standing, he said yes.
Okay. So they would be paying that to extend the line? I wasn't sure if we still had one out there or not, because what is it, did you say 4,500 feet outside of our city limits? So almost a mile outside of our city limits?
Currently, yeah. I mean, we are, I mean, we're extending the line along Olive Branch from near Amwell Road all the way out. This area, it goes through this parcel. So I mean, that is currently under construction and is underway.
The other concern is we can't, you know, due to the annexation role change a few years ago, we can't take any additional properties out there. And, you know, we would hope that they would come and ask, but we're basically running sewer for this development, even though it's a special assessment.
No, we're not, we're running sewer, that project's underway already. We're not running sewer just for this development. This development is one of several tracks.
But they're still, still almost a mile outside of our city limits?
Yes.
Okay.
But, but we are, we're running sewer to serve that whole Olive Branch drainage basin, and there is an assessment district set up for us to recoup our costs as development occurs.
As development comes in.
Right.
Kevin, could you go back to the prior slide? Roughly, what distance are we looking at for the right, from the right-of-way needed to where this proposed PRD is? And I know you-
Yeah, it should be a kind of an estimate. I'm trying to get a 400 to 200 scale, get scaled off the drawing that's in the packet. It's about, from the nearest lot, it's about 150 feet.
Okay. So that's not a big distance.
No.
We know that gray line is a hypothetical line, correct? I mean, that's all we know.
At this time, it is, yes.
So going back to, I guess Tony's remarks about the timing of all this, I don't, I'm not sure I understand the rush behind it. If it's going to be that long before they could ever develop or run water to it anyway, it just doesn't make sense to me to push it in now and then maybe get a more definitive answer to where that roadway or that artery needs to be before we, before we see it again. This is currently in the county, I assume, because they're asking for annexation.
Correct.
Just hypothetically, what would keep them, I guess, from going to the county and trying to get this done and not coming to the city? But of course, it's the city sewer they want to tap. So explain that to me so I have a better understanding.
Yeah, certainly. It's currently zoned RM in the county, which is roughly equivalent to R1 in Smyrna. So they could take a development plan to the county for, with 15,000 square foot lots, very similar to R1's own property in Smyrna. And, and they, you know, the county, it would be, they couldn't turn down the right to subdivide the property. However, I did talk with the county planning director today, and he's assured me, because again, the county is very much on board with the project.
That was my next question. They're aware of this as well, yeah.
Have contributed financially to the study. And we would, we would reserve the right-of-way. Now, they would have the same issue we have, because we don't know exactly where it would go. But they would preserve probably the gray line as shown, because that's the best option they would have. But they, it would be, it would be, that's how they would have to do it, though. But again, they could. Now, the other issue is if there's not enough soil on the property to develop it with some sort of septic system or step system, they would have to come to us for sewer. And as an outside sewer customer, we don't, we don't have to serve them. So.
It seems like a rush to me, when it would benefit them, I think, just as much to know the answers to this as it does us, especially with the sewer in place.
Me to your point earlier, I don't, I don't see any issue with the development. It's just timing.
Timing, yeah.
Other questions? Do I have a motion?
I'm going to make a motion that we deny. The request.
I have a motion to deny the annexation and PR zoning, PRD zoning request. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor of denying the annexation and PRD zoning request signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion fails. Our next item for consideration tonight, rezoning request, John Lloyd, 323 and 325 Lake Farm Road, rezoning request, R4 to R6.
Yeah, this is a rezoning request, R4 to R6. It's at 323 and 325 Lake Farm Road. It is kind of, it's a part of two separate parcels. The current zoning is R4, requested zoning is R6. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R1, R4 and R6, and the land use plan would support medium density residential in this area. A little bit of history on this, why it's got such an odd zoning layout. These properties were actually zoned R6 in 2002, when the R6 district was created. Mr. Lloyd rezoned a portion of each parcel to R4, 2009, with the plan to create a third lot in between them and build a duplex. And so that's why you have, he actually had a subdivision plaque created that he never recorded that would have created that third lot in between the two existing quadruplexes. His request now, what he would like to do is to rezone the property to R6 and then combine that R4 area with the lots that is addressed at 323 Lake Farm Road and build additional units on it. If the property is rezoned, there would be about, that lot would be a rough, a little over 27,000 square feet, so it could have up to nine units total. There's already a existing fourplex on it, so it could be up to five additional units. With the current R4 zoning, he could go back to his original plan and create that third lot and build a duplex on it. And again, the major thoroughfare plan doesn't really affect this property or this site. It is, Lake Farm Road is a collector and there is adequate right-of-way there, so that's not an issue there. And we did receive his review fee, by the way. That was still one of our comments, we did receive that. So that's essentially is the rezoning, if approved, would allow for up to three additional units over what the current zoning would allow. So this, this area is a mix of R4 and R6 already. The R1 zoning is the farm behind it. I guess that's all I've got.
Questions for Kevin or staff?
Buildings on each side of this, there are six, are they, are they the quads now?
Yes.
And there is a current home or duplex there now on the-
There's nothing, the area in between is just vacant land. I think there is a, some sort of storage shed or something, storage building there, but there's no actual structure as far as any type of residence there now. The house, or the, I'm sorry, the quadruplex that's existing on the, on the map to the left, there was a quadruplex that had burned there several years ago, and when it was rebuilt, he rebuilt it and shifted it as far to the left side of that lot as possible to open up that area in between to build something in addition at some point. Just never has built anything.
Other questions for Kevin or staff?
Have there been any comments from the neighbors?
I've not heard anything at this time, no.
It's all primarily rental. All of that, down through that section of Lake Farm is all primarily rental.
Kevin, what's staff's thoughts on this?
You know, I know there's a real hesitation regarding R6. At the same time, I look at this one as it, it was R6. If he'd never resented R4, he could do this exact thing, you know, and without anything coming back to us other than to change, move a lot line. It's really not a huge, it's a two, it's an increase of two or up to five, and so it's a three, potentially three more units on what he could build there by right. So it's not a, it's not a huge increase in units. There's, there's area there to provide the parking that he would need and all that. So I'm not, I don't really have an issue with the zoning, with the request, and I could recommend it to you if you need a recommendation, because it's just not, it kind of fits the area that it's in, to me.
I guess that's what I'm looking at. Currently, we have a combination of R6 and R4 here anyway. And we've got a vacant lot here with some type of storage building or container or shed there.
Other questions?
I guess the key point is the, with the intention or the intended use, it would not be out of place.
Right.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is Lance Kennock, Lot 4A of Lee Bowman Subdivision, Cheney Road, rezoning request C2 to PCD. I'm not going to participate or vote in this, I'm going to ask our vice chairman to take this item.
Yeah, this is a rezoning request. It's a piece of property that's a part of the Lee Bowman subdivision development. It is currently zoned C2. There is a drawing, one of the drawings you have in front of you has a plat that would create this lot as out of Lot 4, proposes Lot 4A. It's about 6,300ths of an acre. Surrounding zoning is a mix of C2 and R6. The future land use plan would support commercial development in this area, and this proposed PCD is for a quick service oil change business. Again, as far as the major thoroughfare plan is concerned, Cheney Road is a, designated as a collector and adequate right-of-way does exist already for this use or for that street there. This is, would also be served, in addition to Cheney Road, it would also be served by a private road that is being built by the developers of Lee Bowman Subdivision to extend from Potomac Place to Cheney Road and make that connection. That's actually where the access to this would be if this approved. There is a pretty extensive portion of this lot is within the, I think it's Energy or Entergy or whatever the name of that company is now, it used to be Texas Eastern Gas Easement there. So their access would actually again be from that private road, even though it has frontage on Cheney Road. Proposed building is a, it currently meets all of our current design requirements, all those kind of things, landscaping and all that. Guess that's all that I've got at this time.
Kevin, is the private road a necessity from the standpoint of that gas line easement?
It is. I mean, plus it does, because of the Sam Ridley limited access, you know, all the frontage lots that are there, two of the three which are under construction currently, they had no access other than that private road. And so that, that provided that access. We, you have Potomac that connects Sam Ridley to Cheney, but all that area to the west of Potomac had no road access other than Cheney. And so that provided that for those out parcels in the front there. And when they created that private road, this area, they lined it up with the private drive that goes into the apartments to the west, which make, which we wanted them to do for my traffic standpoint. And so this area was, was left, really, that's kind of separated from the rest of Lot 4. And so it currently could be a developable lot, it's large enough for that. And so, you know, this use is not allowed currently in C2, but it's, that C2, it doesn't have any visibility from, from Sam Ridley or anything like that. So it's a little bit more difficult probably from a retail standpoint to develop it. So it might be a good fit, and it provides a service to folks that live in that area as well.
Being a rezon request is, and knowing what the intended use of it is, I guess staff has looked at this from a stacking perspective and a parking perspective and-
Yeah, I can't remember. I think it was 14 or 15 cars. I think, because they, once you get into the site, it kind of divides up into three stacking lanes. I think it was, that's how many it was. I can't remember exactly, but something in that, in that range. And even if it was, I mean, there's even room for really a couple more than what they've shown on their drawing, so.
Who's responsible for the private road?
I, that's, it will be, I would assume there's going to be some sort of owners association or something between all those commercial owners. Or I know the detention pond that is a part of that overall development is actually going to be maintained in ownership with the company that's, because a lot of this is land leases or they're signing, so I think the ownership may, may remain with the developer. So, but they would be the responsibility, not the town.
Do we want to make sure somehow that is noted so that we're not responsible for the private road?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Kevin or staff?
Kevin, above that, the C2, is that an empty lot as well or empty lots to the north of it there?
Yes, there's one large empty lot there. A lot of that, again, is encumbered by the easement as well.
Right.
It may show up a little, yeah, it shows up a little better on this one.
So that could be developed, but they won't have access to Cheney either. They'll have to use the private road.
Most likely, they'll use that private road or Potomac Place.
Okay.
Other questions? If none, do we have a motion? Have a motion, we need a second.
Second.
And a second. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes six with one abstention.
Thank you, Kevin.
We are on to preliminary plats. Our first item is Potts View Subdivision, Eugene Drive, owner developer, RHB LLC. Kevin?
Yes, this is a preliminary plat. It's in an R1 zone on Eugene Drive, 40 lots on 20.84 acres. We had several comments, comments one through four would all remain, those are kind of standard comments. Major thoroughfare plan is not, does not affect this development at all as far as any new routes or anything. Comment number six would either remain, because they do still need to submit their construction plans. Number seven, there was a concern from staff's end regarding adequate fire flow for some of the lots. They- They may have to be sprinkled. That's not a definite, we want to do an additional fire flow test to concern, to be sure about that, be certain about that. And so that's still to come, but that was the reason for that comment there, number seven. Staff did recommend a stubb street to the east to provide a future connection to the Narren property and eventually over to Blair Road. That is not shown at this time. They do have the stubb street to the north, that northern property there, but they do not have one shown to the east and they are requesting that you all approve it without it. We did make comment number nine, which would need to remain. Some of the slopes are pretty steep on this and some of the lots, if you look at the drawing in front of you, there are some with the asterisk that are going to be critical lots. And so, so they, they did put that on there. And so that would need to be something that would most likely show up really when the construction plans get drawn up. But that was, we do want to keep comment number nine. Comment number ten, to provide a paved access to the sewer lift station, they have shown that and that can be removed. So the only real main issue, I guess, for discussion would be that stubb street. We, again, we do recommend it. There is about ninety-seven acres to the east of this, between this property and this development and going over to Blair Road, if you go all the way down to near Rock Springs in entirety. That property certainly has a lot of frontage on Blair Road and is not an issue for access to that property. I was primarily concerned with access back to this site for emergency access and that sort of thing to provide another way in and out of this development. There is one street stubbed into the Narren property already. I own a drive as a part of Potts Crossing with stubs in there over twenty years ago. Guess that's all that I have.
Questions for Kevin?
So just to be clear, there's no other access for construction traffic other than through the inhabited area?
That's correct. Unless they were to obtain some sort of temporary construction easement across one of the adjoining, to the, either to the north or to the east.
Kevin, I guess this is one that I've looked at a couple different times and just want to get staff's opinion. This was originally proposed as an R three, which was not approved.
Correct.
It's back to us as an R one, which is the current zoning, so there's no zoning change there.
Correct.
We just recently looked at another subdivision with R one zoning and there was discussion there about not wanting to have more than one connection in because of, I don't know, of exclusivity or, or, you know, maybe, and I'm not sure exactly reasoning or, or what. So I guess what I'm asking for, when you're looking at this and you compare it to the other, are there differences that we need to consider?
Well, a couple of things that was different on that one. There was, there wasn't any additional property around it really
Okay.
to connect to, other than to come, there was a small, one small tract that had frontage on two other places. That was the only thing. And also, there wasn't as, near as many lots. This is more, quite a bit more lots. If you count what's existing, there's, with this development and what's existing on Eugene Drive, there's forty-seven lots that had only has, that would only be the one way in and out. And so that's really my only concern. Now, they are providing the stubb street to the north that would connect, potentially connect to the property to the north, which is actually, the town does have the control over because that's the city limit boundary and that's in Laverne. So surely there could be a connection there at some point. But that would provide, again, but that was our primary concern is just having another way to serve forty-seven lots potentially with another way in and out in case of an emergency. If there was some blockage of Eugene Drive, you're not getting in or out until it can be cleared, so.
Okay, so the stub to the north that you're referring to, that would be the...
It'd be to the, to the right side of the plat.
Yeah, where it says Parker there, and that is Laverne, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And when this, this plat has been before you before, it did have the stubb street that, in the, as they were working through the process and went to TDEC to get grading approval and different things. There's a stream that comes through the property and TDEC is only allowing them to cross it one time. And where they were going to put the stubb street was near where the pump station is. And they would have had, that would force them to cross the stream a second time. So that's why that particular street was removed.
Where was that approximately on?
It's right. Yeah, here it is. I was not really wanting to show it very well on the light. But it's right in here. There, this is where the, there's the paved drive that goes down to the pump station. It was in that general vicinity right there is where it was. Near lot. Lot five. Kind of near, kind of between Lot four and five are right in that area is where that road was on the original drawing.
Other questions for Kevin?
Have there been any citizen comments?
There hasn't been, but then there's, there's not been any kind of signage or anything like that either because it's not a zoning, so we haven't sent letters or anything like that.
This did come to us before as an R three request a year, two ago. It's been a while.
Been a while, yeah.
And we had a few neighbors that didn't want to see growth there at all, you know? They just didn't want it used and that's fair. But this is actually softer zoning than what they live in. This is, these are going to be bigger lots than what they live in. So if there's ever going to be anything there, that's probably what you'd be looking for.
This is the lowest density you're...
Less density, yeah. I'm thinking they were talking about fifty-five or sixty lots at the time. Even if they got R three, they were talking about doing less than what R three would allow them. And this is what, forty plus?
It's forty.
So they've lightened the load on these lot sizes quite a bit. As a matter of fact, it's hard to find lots this size anymore, so. I remember the discussion that we had and I remember some of the neighbors that had concerns and that's fair, that's valid. But the, one in particular did not want to see anything in behind them up in there. And it's just hard to tell a landowner, they can't sell their property because one person doesn't want that. And this is going to actually allow a much softer density than what they were thinking they were going to look at then, so. If it goes through.
And Kevin, your, your comments here reference the stubb street to the Narren property and they're, they're fine with that? I mean, they're, they're expecting that?
They're not. I think that's, in fact, in talking with the engineer on the project, they, I think they actually did approach them about, about a sewer easement or something like that. And it was, no, we're not going to sell anything. You know, I'm never, I'm never going to sell the property or whatever, but, and that's probably true. But at some point, somebody else is going to own the property, I think. And so I think at some point, it's just natural that it will be developed at some point. It may be a long time still, but...
Well, it's just a stub.
Yeah, and we're not, it would not be going onto that property at all. And it would be short enough, it wouldn't even have to have a cul-de-sac on it or a temporary cul-de-sac at all. It would just be a stubb street of, you know, a hundred and fifty feet or whatever.
It would be like what's already on Iona.
Exactly.
Other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item under preliminary plats is Saddle Grove, eighty-nine sixty-five Rocky Fork Ambleville Road. Owner developer, S Collins Two Properties LLC and Patterson Company LLC.
This is a...
Make sure you got that.
Got it. Yeah, this is a preliminary plat, R three zoning, ten point nine eight acres, twenty-two lots proposed. We had several comments which were standard comments, really one through four. The major thoroughfare plan does designate Rocky Fork Ambleville Road as a minor arterial and adequate roadway is proposed to be dedicated with this plat for that roadway. Comment six is just asking them to submit the construction plans prior to final plats. We want to keep that. We still need to keep comment seven. They have shown the roadway names, but we still need the nine-one-one approval of those names. Number eight, we would need to keep, the plat is required to be stamped and signed by the registered engineer that prepared it. There was some confusion. I think our, our land development handbook mentioned something about a surveyor, but the subrags do require a civil engineer to stamp the plan, so we do need to keep that one. Nine through eleven are, are comments from CUD. This area is, does not have adequate fire flow at this time, but there is some proposed improvements to correct that, that are to be completed relatively soon, I believe, so. But we would still need to keep those comments. Really, we're keeping all the comments on this one, one through eleven. And I guess that's all I have. We could recommend it to you.
Questions for Kevin? Do I have a motion?
Move for approval with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is Stewart's Glen, eighty-one sixty-two and eighty-two eighty-six Rocky Fork Ambleville Road. Owner developer, Real Estate Solutions Group LLC.
This is fifteen point one six acres, zone PRD, it's sixty-one lots proposed. This is part of the Stewart's Glen PRD. You all saw this a couple of months ago for, for my rezoning standpoint. And so that has now submitted the preliminary plat. We have, again, several first four comments are standard comments that would need to remain. Comment number five, again, this property also fronts on Rocky Fork Ambleville Road. And there is adequate roadway proposed to be dedicated with this plat for, for that. We, comment number six, asked them to show and label all the easements, including widths, including utilities easements and private roadways. That one has been addressed and can be removed. And then comments seven through nine are CUD comments. Again, it's in the same situation as the other one we just looked at on Rocky Fork Ambleville Road. And again, the improvements are, are coming relatively soon, but we would need to keep those comments because they could not get building permits at this time until that, those improvements are completed. So with those comments, we recommend approval.
It's consistent with what we previously looked at?
It is consistent with the approved PRD as you looked at a couple of months ago. Yes, sir.
Questions for Kevin? Do I have a motion?
Move for approval with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments from Andrew. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Amy. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on to final plats. Our first item is Ideal Troton Smyrna, eighty-one Troton Drive. Owner developer, Troton Tennessee Incorporated.
This is the final plat. That's for three lots on sixty-one acres in the I two zone. Again, we had a few standard comments that we would, would need to keep there, one through four. The major thoroughfare plan does designate Troton as a local street. And it's currently stubbed into the property. It's proposed to be extended to provide a full cul-de-sac and adequate roadway would exist with, and it would be, it exists for the street in the cul-de-sac area. It would be dedicated with this plat. We would need to keep comments six and seven, kind of which are kind of standard comments for them. We did ask them, comment number eight, to show public water and sewer extension to serve Lot three and that is, has been shown and can be removed. And then comment number nine, there is a public water line that serves the pump house on Lot two and then there's a private water line that goes from the pump house to the fire hydrant. And they had it shown going underneath that proposed public roadway. All those lines have been moved and easements have been shown now, so we can remove comment number nine. We had a, there is a potential for some, some, a site plan to be coming on this as well in the future on Lot one. And then Lot three is just, would be, is being offered for sale, I believe, at this time from Troton. But, but again, this is, certainly is consistent with the zoning requirements in the subdivision regulations and we can recommend approval with those comments. Best go one through seven.
Questions for Kevin? Do I have a motion?
Move for approval with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve with staff comments. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item under final plats is Legacy Luxury Townhomes, Lot one twenty, Section four of the Legacy, fourteen hundred Lee Victory Parkway. Owner developer, Legacy Joint Venture.
This is just a plat to basically create the horizontal property regime, dedicate easements, public easements. This is for the Legacy Luxury Townhomes. It's Lot one twenty of Section four of the Legacy. There's fifty-two units shown, which is, is on the eight point five one acres. Is consistent with the approved site plan and the, and approved PRD. We had three comments there. We would need to keep those comments. Just kind of standard type comments. And with that, we would recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments from Amy. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item should be site plan. Our next item should be site plan Marriott Hotel, four-one-one Potomac Place. Um, and I've just lost my agenda somewhere in all the shuffles. Hang on just a second. Owner developer, Smyrna River Life Assembly of God Skyline Hospitality. Kevin?
This is a site plan for Marriott Hotel, uh, which you did see previously in August of twenty-nineteen. Uh, they have resubmitted at this time due to the, uh, the site plan expired before they could pull building permit, so they have reapplied. And this is the similar plan to what they previously submitted. Uh, it is sitting on about two point eight three acres, located at four-one-one Potomac Place, at the intersection of Cheney Road and Potomac Place. This proposed building is to be approximately sixty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-two square feet in size. Property is bound to the north by Condominium Complex, to the east by Future Gene Lane Extension, to the south by Potomac Place, and to the west by Cheney Road. Surrounding zoning consists of R six and C two. As proposed, the site may be accessed from a single access point on Potomac Place. And then this proposed building is also to be five stories and fifty-four feet in height. Uh, the height overlay has been approved for this property by town council. Previously, one did go through, uh, planning commission originally in twenty-nineteen. Vehicle use area at the site, fifty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight square feet are proposed, which would require five thousand, five hundred and twenty-six square feet of landscaping. Applicant is proposing for seven thousand square feet of landscaping, so they're exceeding that requirement. Required parking of two spaces per unit at a hu, two hundred and two spaces, and they're showing for a hundred and eight. That would also require five handicap spaces, and they're showing those five as well. Landscape plans moved by the applicant shows a variety of street trees and shrubs along Potomac Place and Cheney Road. Due to that Enbridge utility easement along the, I believe that'd be the eastern property line. Uh, this does prevent street scaping along, uh, part of Potomac Place and in landscape islands in the eastern parking area. Due to this, the designer review manual requirement of street trees spaced every forty feet will not be met. There are shrubs also shown to be planted around the base of the building as well. Architecture elevations show the building to be built with a mix of fiber cement and ephes in different colors. The current requirements of designer review limit ephes and fiber cement to more, no more than twenty-five percent of the elevation visible from public street and no more than fifty percent of the entire building. However, when this building was originally approved, it did meet designer review requirements back in two thousand and nineteen. Uh, we cut, have a couple of standard comments, all to remain. Just one of note for comment three, for the contractor to notify Enbridge prior to construction, being work will be conducted within their easement. Uh, comment, when we go onto the staff comments, staff comment one, the street tree spacing requirement in the designer review manual cannot be met due to the Enbridge easement. Comment two, the site plan approved back in twenty, August of twenty-nineteen and has been resubmitted as no building permit was obtained within one year as required. A grading permit has been issued and work has begun on this project, though. Comment three regarding the elevations, the proposed elevations do not meet the current designer review requirements. However, when they did, uh, they did meet the requirements when the project was originally approved. The developer requests that the elevations be approved as submitted, consistent with the elevations as approved in August of twenty-nineteen. There were some issues regarding COVID-related delays, but the developer is now ready to move forward with the building permit, and that's when this, uh, all came up back. They wanted to pull the building permits, and it was noted that the site plan has expired, being it's been over two years now. So, uh, that, that is what they are coming back here, basically submitting a mirror image of what was previously approved in twenty-nineteen. With that, staff would recommend approval of the comments as submitted.
Questions for Mitchell or staff? You know, Mitchell, as, as, as I recall, uh, when we looked at this in two thousand and nineteen, there was a lot of discussion around the design with the fiber board and the ephes, and this was part of a branding that was specific to this type of, uh, product that Marriott developed. And I, I think we, we took that into consideration as part of the approval. And, um, you know, we're, we're back again, and believe me, I understand the COVID part of it. Tried to go eat at about five or six different fast food restaurants the other day, couldn't get into any of them. And so, I, I think, you know, this is real, uh, as far as what the developer is saying. And, and, um, I think in the past, that when we've had an expired, uh, plan due to unforeseen circumstances with, and with no changes, that we've, uh, tended to approve them since we've already gone through the approval process and much of the discussion. Other questions or comments?
You know, I remember having the discussion, just like you, Tim, on this one, and, uh, for the very same reasons. And, uh, I hate to penalize anybody wanting to bring such a nice and a beautiful product to us that, uh, had to go through the same season. A lot of other businesses had to go through to, to get through the, the downtime, so. I'm happy to see they're back and they're wanting to do it. It's a, it's a very, very attractive building. So, um, I'm just glad to see them bring it back and want to keep going.
Other questions or comments?
There were, there was in the original discussion some concern about the road. Is that, that has been worked out, the road coming through on the back corner of that property?
Yes, yeah, I mean, we're, yeah, that, the right-of-way for that Genee Lane Extension that you're talking about?
Because it was kind of in the air at one time.
Yeah, but it's, it's, it's all been worked through, and, and that's not going to be an issue at all.
The elevation, is it higher, lower? What's the situation with elevation there not meeting new requirements?
This is, goes back to a couple of months ago. We adapted the new designer review requirements for certain percentages on the building. That didn't exist back in twenty-nineteen.
Right.
So, that's what that comment is about.
Yeah.
Other questions or discussion? Do I have a motion?
Move to review, move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. You guys may help me if I've gone off script. Uh, zoning ordinance amendment is our next agenda item?
Yeah, it's actually, that's an agenda item, but there actually is not one tonight, so.
Okay, so that's gone?
Yes.
Somewhere in this stack of paperwork is the updated agenda that Mitchell gave me. I have no idea.
Yeah.
Uh, where it's at now. Mandatory referrals. Uh, I have Anthem at Creekside, partial drainage easement release.
Yeah, this is a request. Uh, staff's had several discussions, uh, with folks representing Maldron Enterprises LLC, requesting the town to abandon an existing drainage easement across tax map twenty-eight, parcel eighty-eight point zero one. As further reference, this five hundred Noah Lane has been recently developed as the Anthem at Creekside Apartments. This is a drainage easement that was originally dedicated to the town in nineteen eighty-seven. Uh, with the recent subsequent development of this track, the drainage easement is no longer necessary as the drainage has been installed in another location on the property. And a final platte reflecting the necessary easements in the correct locations has been approved. Uh, this is when it kind of came to light, kind of a little bit after the fact, because it was, it was just done by deed. It wasn't done through a platte, and so I think it, it was a little later to the, getting found, I guess. Uh, so this is, it's on the drawing, on the, on the PowerPoint there, and what you had in your packet. It's the area, it's the easement that's kind of highlighted in dark, uh, dark gray on the far right side of the, of the, uh, property there as you're looking at it. It actually is, I mean, there's buildings within the easement now and all that, so. But again, we do have adequate drainage easements, what we need for where the drainage is actually located now, uh, it has been created and is there, so. Again, the planning commission is required to review the abandonment of public land or easements and find whether or not this is in keeping with the adopted conference of plan, and make a recommendation to council, and staff would recommend this to you.
Questions for Kevin? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the release.
I have a motion to approve the release. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the release. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. We are next on, I hope, to the August bond review report.
That's correct.
If I could suspend the meeting just for a second, uh, Mr. Strange?
Yes, sir.
I, I was wondering if you knew what time it was.
It is six o'clock.
Oh, I thought you were going to say something else.
It's game time.
All right. All right, our bond review.
Yeah, but we got, just got four tonight. Uh, the first one is Woodcrest, section five. This is, um, one we've had about three years, three and a half years now. They are, are built out now, uh, and I have, I had, since the packet went out, I have talked to the developer, and they are, they are, he has assured me they're going to get to work and get this done. But they are still, got some items to clean up there. Uh, we would recommend a six-month extension on that one, since it does, it only expires in twelve days. I don't think they'll get done by then. Addition to Village of Island Green, section three. Uh, this is one that we've had, only had one year. And the, uh, talked to the developer, and they said it would be, he'll be at least six months or so before he's ready to finish. This one's only about seventy percent or so built out. So, we would recommend a one-year extension on that one. Uh, Bankside Five, Phase Two. Uh, this is one, uh, we've, again, we've only had it a year. Developer has said he thinks they can get everything done by the end of the September. If he's able to do that, um, we would, would be okay with, uh, reducing this one to ten thousand, extend it one year as the maintenance bond, uh, once he gets that final top. And this is one, we have a, a escrow account, so it's not, uh, we don't have to worry about, uh, a letter of credit from a bank. And so, uh, this one's a little easier for us to work with and reduce in that one. And we would recommend that, once they get the final top and done. And then the last one is Buckingham Place, section two, phase one. Again, same developer as, on Woodcrest. Uh, they again, did talk to him since then. And, um, he's, again, told me the same thing. He's, we're trying to finish all these out kind of at the same time. Uh, we did recommend a, a six-month extension. This was one, he has a little bit more time on this one. So, if he is able to, to get that work completed by October tenth, uh, just extend it one year as the maintenance bond. But if not, just extend it six months, so we can look at it again in six months, so. And that's all we have. We recommend that to you.
Questions, uh, for Kevin on the August bond review report? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the August bond review report. Further discussion? All those in favor of approving the report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, bond review report is approved. Staff comments?
Do I have anything else?
Anything from staff there? Okay. Uh, want to wish everybody a, a safe and happy Labor Day weekend. It's the time to, uh, catch up on a little bit of rest. We're going to close out the summer, uh, and move on to fall. So, with that, we stand adjourned.